Regular meeting of the Solvang City Council for February 22nd, 2016. We'll call the roll, please.
Councilmember Deuce?
Here.
Jamison?
Here.
Skid?
Here.
Zimmerman?
Present.
Mayor Richardson?
Here. Mr. Zimmerman, won't you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager's report.
Two things to report. I don't know that if I had reported on our customer water conservation from the reeds in January. We're currently doing the February reeds. But we were down 20% from 2013 in January. And that gets compared to, we were down 12% in January of 2015. So actually, January is one of those tougher months, but they did, the customer did fairly well with that. And then I just wanted to report that the TOT for the first six months of the fiscal year, which would be July through December, is up a total of 12%. So we're looking real good on our revenues in that.
Thank you, Susan.
That's my report.
The revenues are up, that's great. I judge that by the west end of the mission, you bet. Public communications, written or verbal, at this time, please direct comments to the city council regarding consent calendar items or matters not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the council. Speakers limited to five minutes. Have some speaker slips. Fred Koval?
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. Fred Koval, got a couple of handouts for you. First one I'd like to hand out has to do with public transportation. And what it says is... And what it says is that it's too costly, there's no ridership, they ought to get rid of it. Anyway, this is in Sunday's paper, Santa Barbara news press. The second item that I'd like to hand out is associated with precipitation. And precipitation... Oh, hey, I'd like to have one too. This is precipitation on Nordentoff, just happens to be where I have a residence. And I've got a, I got a gauge, and the gauge reads to the tenths, and I can interpret to the hundreds with a, with a sentient six-inch steel ruler. And what I'd like to call your attention to on this page is several items. First of all, if you go December to December, from last year to this year, it was a little better last year in 2015 than it was this year. And when I say this year, I mean 2014 versus 2015. And then also, if you look at January, year over year, from last year, seven tenths, and this year, 4.59, pretty good. So it came a little later. However, if you look at February, it was, over February, it was about the same, .8 versus .56. Now, the big thing is the right column, which is the cumulative rainy season. And over there, the first one says November, December, January, February, March, April of the last year. And it shows that 2014, 2015, during the rainy months, in that timeframe, the real rainy months, up there on the hill, it was 4.68 inches, okay, off on the right. However, this year, if you look at that same rainy season, November, December of last year, and January, and then February 22nd, tonight, this year, 2014, 2015, we have 7.21 inches. Doesn't look bad compared to last year. However, when I go to ID1's meeting last week, you know, they have all of the data. They look at NOAA El Nino, they look at Weather Underground, they look at the Farmers' Almanac, which has been spot on. And there is not going to be any miracle March rains. So now, the weather seers are saying, well, hey, maybe it's going to be April and even into May. See? And the thing is, it's not confirmed by the long-range forecasts. Now here's what ID1 said last Tuesday's meeting. They said that there is all likelihood that there will be a new drought record, a new year, that'll be a more severe drought than we've ever had in our past droughts, cyclic droughts. And they're saying that there's evidence, come the Bureau reclamation, that we could conceivably see the yield out of Lake Kachuma drop from 25,000 acre feet to 18,000 acre feet. That'll be the yield for everyone, for the south coast, as well as the downstream users. What does that all mean? Well, you've got the new bulldog on the street called the GSA, the Groundwater Sustainability Act, where basically it took away all riparian rights. Everything is now under the control of the State of California. And what will that mean? People really need to start thinking about that, looking about that, and what is going to be the long-range needs and availability of water for this valley. I can only encourage you all that you need a JPA that does the valley. That means from Santa Inez all the way down to Lompoc, because everybody is going to need help.
Thank you, Fred. That's not very encouraging news. We won't shoot the messenger. Susan Williams?
Good evening, Mayor Richardson and City Council. Susan Williams, I'm here tonight representing Solvang Third Wednesday. I figured out today that I've been coming here and talking to you about Third Wednesday for eight years now. It's still going strong. We have 55 business participants, several sponsors, you know, between the sponsors, the Wine Walk, and the businesses. So we're very happy with that. Our money is raised mostly from the Solvang Wine and Beer Walk that happens every month. And then our participant fees, and we do have some grants that we get. We have gotten a grant from the city, and we thank you very much. And we've also gotten one from the Chumash advertise, the marketing department for our beer and wine walk. So that helps us put on the events. One of the things that we also do with the money we raise from that is we publish this Solvang Wine and Beer Experience card that has all the tasting rooms who participate in the Solvang Wine and Beer Walk, which is everybody except for two. Little bit of information, and this is distributed at all the hotels and a lot of businesses in town. We are primarily a volunteer committee that operates under the Solvang Chamber of Commerce. And we have our usual monthly events every year. We're working in partnership with the city to advertise their brown bag lunch meetings. Our big events are coming up, Midsummer Music in June, which is a day of music from 12 noon to 12 midnight. It's a lot of fun. We're going to do our weekly Wednesday concerts in the park from mid-June to mid-August this year. Those are very popular, we're seeing more families, we have some food trucks there, and people seem to really like that combination. And of course, we have our Scarecrow Fest and our shop mingle and jingle. And the funds that we receive from the City of Solvang, we use to promote those two events. And from, those are the only events that we can really tell where the people come from and if it's successful or not. So on this Scarecrow Fest, we had over 100 entries in Solvang, just in Solvang itself. We did not win the Valleywide contest, and we're going to try really hard to bring that trophy back to Solvang this year. There were almost 1,000 ballots turned in, and I've given you a top 10 in here. Number one is the Santa Inez Valley, and I actually like to see the Santa Inez Valley in the top 10, because that means that our locals are coming in to support Solvang and shop and eat and drink and maybe cast their scarecrow ballots. Interestingly enough, and for the Scarecrow Fest, the combined out-of-state was the second most. In December, that was not even in the top 10, so I think in December, right before Christmas, people aren't traveling here. So you can see on here where those come from. Also for the...
Were those out-of-state from all over the country?
From all over the country.
Really?
Yeah. The number one was Arizona.
Wow.
For shop mingle and jingle, we had an opportunity drawing, and people had to spend a minimum of $25, and they could be entered into an opportunity drawing for a really beautiful Solvang gift basket. So if everybody who turned in a ballot spent a minimum of $25, that generated almost $18,000 in sales, and that's just at a bare minimum. So we were happy with that. And again, the Santa Inez Valley was the number one entry from those ballots, followed by Los Angeles, and then the upper 818 area code and lower 805. So we were happy with our participation in that. And I just wanted to give you that information and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Susan, that's great stuff. These cards in particular, good deal. Carrie McKinnon?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city staff. Carrie McKinnon, I am here as the supervisor of the Solvang Branch Library to give you a six-month report instead of quarterly. I do apologize that I have not been here sooner to talk to you. As you know, last June, the County Board of Supervisors voted to pull the Buellton Branch into and under the same umbrella as Solvang Branch, so that we are now, all the Valley libraries are operated by the City of Santa Barbara. And yours truly is supervising all of them. So I have a little bit less time. And, but, I am also here to tell you that your library is not less busy. I gave you a fairly thick packet of statistics for the two quarters we've missed, July through September, and then October through December, and one document for January of 2016. So you can see that our visitors monthly range from in the upper 5,000s to over 8,000. That's people walking in the door. We continue to have two weekly storytimes. We have children's programs, special children's programs funded by the Friends of the Library and funded by our community partners. So each of those statistics, for each month, there's three sheets. The top statistics page, the second is the total programs, and the third page is detail about the programs, what we actually did, and you'll see our community partners on there. So I'm not going to go into the past with those. I will tell you that our summer reading program was, we had more sign-ups than the year before. 320 children read, signed up to read, 178 of those read five books, and 129 read 10 books. We had 37 teens sign up and read at least one book. And that's all the statistics I'm going to give you unless you have some questions about those. I really would love to tell you about what we're doing and what's coming up. So the last page that I handed you is our monthly calendar from March with a few previews. I want you to know that we have started our Santa Barbara Reeds Program. Every year, we do this adult reading program in which we cooperate with both UCSB and Santa Barbara City College. The book this year is "Just Mercy" by Brian Stevenson. And we're having three events in the valley here. Two of them will be out at Buellton Library, and one, I'm so excited to tell you, we will be hosting an original play at the Solvang Festival Theater as Solvang Libraries Just Reads event. And that play will be called "Qualities of Mercy" by a group called Drama Dogs, and that will be in April. Let's see, we've started having family game night.
Carrie?
Yes.
I was participating in this program for books from the university. But I haven't gotten one this year yet.
Oh.
Are they still mailing them?
Please come to the library and check one out, we have copies.
I want to keep one.
Oh.
And they, that's what they do, they would mail it and...
They used to?
Yeah, last two years, not this year. I haven't received one yet.
You know, you're right, I didn't get a free one this year either.
Uh-oh.
I'll check into that for you.
Okay, thanks.
Meanwhile, you can borrow it for no charge.
Okay.
Let's see, family programs. We have started to have family game night once a month. If you would like to come and play board games, you don't have to come with your family, you could come with your friends, for all ages. Kind of a fun get-away-from-your-cellphone evening for the family. What else are we doing that's really fun? In March, I'm very excited, the Friends of the Library will be bringing in a historical storyteller named Darcy Stevens. Excuse me, I think I got her last name wrong. Anyway, it's on there. She is from Williamsburg, Virginia. She does historical reenactments, she's doing a program called Revolutionary Women, and it's all about the Revolutionary War in those times. And it's a program that's appropriate for both adults and students, fourth grade and up. And the City of Solvang Rec Department is collaborating with us in providing the Legion wings so that we can have a large audience for this play. That's all my news. Any questions? Thank you, I knew I got that wrong.
We miss you, actually, being you dedicated to our library, you know that.
I know that.
And that's not your fault.
And I miss it too.
Thank you for your presentation.
All right, thank you so much.
Keep me in mind on this book. Last year, last year was "Orange is the New Black." It was a great read, great read. Counsel, is there any more speakers? I have no other, no other speaker slips, anyone else wish to speak? Seeing them, we'll bring it back to the council for council comments and requests. Mr. Skid, would you like to start?
Okay, I'm sorry that Susan left, because I have a comment for all three of the speakers. First, towards, in regards to Mr. Koval, and regards to the water level at Lake Kachuma. One of the groups who should really be worried about the Kachuma going down is the City of Santa Barbara, because I think they'd have great incentive to get their D-SAL plant going online, because they're going to have a very large electric bill pumping the water into the tunnel, since it is going down. So, because the lake has been holding its own for the last couple of weeks at about 665.18, but if we get warm water, warm weather like we have, it's going to start going back down again.
May I make a comment a moment? Regarding the D-SAL plant?
Mm-hmm.
I talked to the mayor, and she said, "I told you so." The D-SAL plant's going to be in production, and they're going to need it because of the lana that we're having this year.
And then next comment, sorry Susan, was that I was going to make a comment about Third Wednesday, and I was going to say that I was, when it first came on, I was a little leery of it, that if it was going to be successful, I was going to congratulate them on having a successful project that's lasted eight years. And then the last one is to Carrie in regards to the library. I usually walk by the library every weekday, and usually even on the weekends, and I always see a large number of people going in and out of the door, and have come in and gotten some stuff, and had, very pleased with the service. And it's really a nice addition that the City of Solvang has, it's a great asset to the community. I just want to congratulate Carrie on maintaining that asset, because the last couple of years with the funding from the county and the City of Santa Barbara, it has been a struggle, to say the least. But it's, you're still hanging in there, and it's still a very good quality product. And that's my comments for the night.
Mr. Zimmerman?
No comment.
Mr. Deuce?
Ditto on the no comment.
Ms. Jamison?
Well, I'm going to make up for all of them. So myself and the majority of the staff, upper staff, went to the Buellton State of the City. And we found these at our place settings. And it says, "Buellton, feel the energy," but the real comment was, "Buellton is popping." And they are popping. I mean, I, I guess I wonder where they're getting all the water to furnish all of these new buildings that are going up, and all these new apartments, and all the commercial spaces they're putting up. But evidently, they have enough water to service all that, so good for them. It was a nice luncheon. Of course, they kind of dug into Solvang at the end by saying that, you know, "We're sorry that your modes of transportation have gone back in time," and they showed a picture of the honin, the horse-drawn carriage. And I thought that was, that was the best part of his speech, actually. Yes, word solving. And then we also had the presentation by the Green, what are they called? Thank you, the Green Building Council. It was, the meeting was a little bit long, I thought, so that's just a warning to us to not have too many comments and not a very long speech, Brad? Very short, that's good. But it was, it was enjoyable. I'm going to kind of piggyback on, not what Carrie said, but just on information about the library. Shirley Stacy was here a few meetings ago telling us that they were thinking about going out for an election of bond. And they have, I won't say they've hit a roadblock, but I think they finally realized that they just can't do it as fast as they want to do. And there are whole, there are many, many questions that they have to answer. How they're going to do it, what the district is going to look like, are there going to be many individual little districts? Do the cities have to participate by putting it on, on a ballot? You know, there are so many questions that they don't know about, that they kind of, I think they're going to step back and take a deep breath and maybe start over again and get all of their ducks in order in order to make this successful. Because the way they're going about it now, it would just die. It would, it would not get the support it needed. So I have a couple of questions about our library and how it's funded. When Buellton was excommunicated from the Lompoc branch and taken into the Santa Barbara City branch, or that zone, the funds were distributed differently. And before we get into our budget time as to what we're going to be able to give to our library, I'd like to know how the funds from the county are being distributed. From the county? Or to the city, from the city. It's per capita, so it is from the county. So I'd like to know how that money, who's getting what? Because I know Solvang Library is also responsible for the library at Los Olivos and the library in Santa Inez. And I'd like to look at some new numbers about how, what the usage is in both libraries. And maybe this is not something that's in our purview to do, but I'd like to know where the money's going. So.
If we get three nods, we can bring an item back to discuss that.
Because I think it all, I think it just all kind of happened, and we weren't really told how it was all going to be managed.
Could that be a part of their, of their grant request?
No, I don't think so. That's Friends of the Library, that's different.
I don't think so.
We make...
We make, we make the donation to the library.
To the, to the library, yes, but it don't, doesn't the friend, don't the Friends come in and ask for the funds?
They support it.
Yeah, they're not the applicant.
Okay.
Yeah.
If it could be a part of the grant, the grant request...
I think we need to know it before then.
I'd like to know it before then, before we come down to grants, exactly how that money comes in.
There's also something else. Buellton has made a request for essentially six-day service, which would require a full-time director, and so, not director, but supervisor. So that will affect our situation. The city manager had written me an email and said we need to get together and talk about those ramifications. So we'll probably tie that into the discussion also as to how that could affect Solvang and the Solvang Libraries funding.
Well, was, was it my understanding on those memos that that, that supervisor would be Carrie, or?
They, yeah, there's no names.
No, no name, yeah. Okay.
The reason, the reason I think it should come in with a grant request, because then it'll help us earn our decision, is to much, how much to allocate, we'll have that information right at our fingertips.
I'd rather have it before so we can mull it over and think about it, and see how we're going to use the monies, instead of making that decision when we get the grant request and they do their presentation.
That's fair.
I think there's, I think there's a lot of information that we need to make a good decision. And I think that's all. Thank you.
First thing that I want to say is that in the news lately, and in some of the, my cohorts in other cities, is the crime problem in Santa Barbara and Santa Maria and Lompoc. I want to commend our, our staff and our police chief for the fine work they're doing with crime in our city. It's, we don't have near the problem that those other cities have. And it's, and it's concerning me because we're almost like at the focus of a parabola with the, with Santa Barbara, Lompoc, and Santa Maria surrounding us, that it could be a focus for, for, for crime in our area. And I'm, I'm glad to see that it's being handled very well, and I want to thank you for that, chief. It's really good. And the other thing that, that happened just recently is the, is my, is my favorite, one of my favorite events for the year is the Greyhound Gathering. That happened this Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And it was unfortunately going to be the last scheduled one. The, the director that, that runs it is retiring from the post, and they haven't been able to find anybody yet to replace her. But in, in my discussions with them, I begged them to find somebody, because we, they are probably the best convention that we could have in the city. They're just, they don't have an impact to the rest of the citizens, and the merchants love them, they, because they bring in so much traffic. And some of them have told me that they, they intend, they have made reservations for next year. If the, if the convention doesn't occur, they'll still be here. And it's, it's been great for the city, and I can't say too much about, about the Greyhounds at all. And I want to thank Mr. Skid for his motel in allowing them to put the dogs up in the rooms. And he allows them year after year, which indicates to me that, that they really take care of their animals, and they take care of the rooms that they're staying in, so. So I want to thank you, Ed, for that. And that's all I have for now.
Approval of the agenda as presented, does anyone make any changes to the two items on the agenda? No? Okay. City Council, minutes of February the 8th, may I have a, is there any corrections, deletions, or changes to the agenda? If not, can I have a motion, please?
I just have one comment, and that's about, a comment, if I made it, it was the wrong comment to say. And that was about having an auditor change every year in the school districts that I was in. We did it like in a four or five-year period. We kept them, and then we, and we, what we had, we had two or three of them, and we just rotated them. But, you know, if there's no, no law that says that we have to do that, then we don't have to do that.
Any other comments? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
They're moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If there's no's or abstentions, pass. Consent agenda. Does anybody wish to pull any items on the consent agenda, which there are?
Pull the...
Pull A, no.
Pull the item.
I have a question or a comment. The reports are always very thorough and good. I would just like to know what area these so-called crimes happen in, where the burglaries are taking place? If it's in Skid Mesa, or if it's in Creekside, or if it's in the Glan, or where they are? Is that possible to do?
I don't want addresses, I just want areas.
Mayor and City Council, I'm Sean O'Grady, Chief of Police, Solvang. And you want to know what areas they're taking place in?
Yeah.
You know, they're varied. They don't usually stay, stick in one area. You'll see, usually if we have a rash of burglaries or car burglaries, things like that, we'll put up a little pin map, and we'll check to see which, which areas they're in, extra patrol those areas. But as far as, you know, we can give you the areas they're in if that's what you want.
I would like that.
Okay. But they're usually scattered out.
That's fine. That makes me feel better. I just don't want them all in my neighborhood.
Mention it by Creekside or downtown?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Or Alisol or someplace.
It could even go like the six, somewhere in the 1600 block of Copenhagen or something like that.
Okay. We can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
I move the approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed? Pass. On the regular agenda. Lisa?
Item six, discussion and direction for ad hoc committee with the San Diego Band of Chumash Indians.
Staff report?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Two years ago, you established a two-member ad hoc committee to meet with the San Diego Band of Chumash Indians. And Council, Councilmember Deuce and Mayor Richardson are your members. And Chairman Armenta and Tribal Councilmember Khan represent the tribe. It was initially created for a one-year term, and then last February, you increased that another year, so that expiration is, is once again upon you on, so you'll make, need to make the decision if you'd like to extend the term of the, of the ad hoc committee. That's one thing. And then the most recent discussion that the, the group has had is over the funding of the expansion of our, of our fire station for the new ladder truck that the, the tribe is going to be purchasing for the Santa Barbara County Fire District. We, I think we talked a little bit about this a couple of meetings back, but the fire department has now decided to go from a, to a single chassis ladder truck, which is much shorter. And so the needs of the expansion are much different now. I think, do we have a, we have a little drawing that the architect did for us. So we're now down, we, when we initially talked, we had to expand both the front and the rear of the building. Now we can get away with just extending the rear by 10 feet, and we'll have adequate room for this, this vehicle to, to fit in there. We talked to the architect, and the, and the fees for that are going to be about 32, it was 32,000. And then that's about a 240-square-foot addition. We would estimate that's probably going to be anywhere from 60 to 70,000 dollars to construct that. Lisa's getting that up there. But, let's see. Yeah, the, the reason we're going out the rear is the fire department would like to be able to do their daily checks on the truck out front. So we, they wanted to leave as long a path as possible without getting out into the sidewalk and things like that. So, so that's why we chose to do the rear. Now what that'll do is it'll eliminate, I believe, three or four parking spots back there. What we'd like to do is then remove the wall that's back and the landscaping and reconfigure that, and we'll be able to gain those spots back. And that, that may be one of the things that the, the city could donate is with our crews, we could do that demolition of that, that landscape and brick and pavement area back there. I think your ad hoc committee's looking for direction on that, to meet with the ad hoc committee. You did meet, I think that was about three weeks ago that you guys met with the tribal group. And so, that's, that's what you're looking for. And then also, if, any participation in that, and then also if you'd like to extend the term of the ad hoc committee. So do you have a pointer? So here's, here's the existing. There's the existing bay, and then it's just this pop-out right here. So we're gonna add 10 feet to the back of the building, which would eliminate these parking stalls right in there. And we would do no changes to the front, but the landscape and everything, we would change this over here. And I apologize for the drawing. Our internet's down, and so we couldn't get the plans full-size, so you got just the shortened version from Lisa. But, so that, that concludes my report. If there's any questions on that?
I have a question. Is the demolition included in the $65,000 cost of the renovation?
No.
It's not. It's over and above that.
Yeah.
So theoretically, is there any idea what those demolition costs might be?
We've not done the numbers on that. No, we've not run any numbers. But we could. If, if that's the choice, we could run those numbers to see what that'd cost.
Is there any questions?
Just one, one question in regards to the apparat, I know one of the questions originally was, was the front opening going to be large enough, tall enough? Have we determined, has the county determined that the existing opening is tall enough?
Yes, this particular, the height that we needed for the other rig was the, the rear steer unit was about two feet taller on that truck, and so that's why with this single chassis, it's, you lose that extra two feet, I believe it was.
Any other questions?
What was the total addition on the square footage?
About 240 square feet.
Other questions? We'll take it to the audience. Sam, would you like to speak on this item? You don't have to.
Sam Cohen, Government Affairs and Legal Officer, San Diego Band of Chumash Indians. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The tribe is committed to buying an aerial ladder truck, and we've been in negotiations with the fire chief, and they have changed the design ever so slightly. I think Chairman Armenta's preference is to put it in Solvang if at all possible. There was a request for some sort of match from the city, but I'm not sure if it necessarily has to be actual cash, or like the city manager mentioned, it could be an in-kind contribution to complete the project on your side. So I look forward to your decision.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we, Sam, let me ask you a question about the ad hoc committee. Is that, is that, has that been satisfactorily accepted by the chairman and the vice chairman? Are they encouraged by those, by these meetings?
I, I think it was, maybe in its first year, we didn't have a lot of issues, but now in the second year, this fire truck and the, and the extension of the fire station shows the utility of the ad hoc committee.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments from the audience, can I, has, anybody wish to comment on it now from the dais?
The comment I'm gonna make is that, from listening to Sam, that it has, has been effective this, this last year. I would say we should continue another year. And if it comes to the point after the end of that year that we don't need it, we can do away with it. But it seems to me that so far, it's worked out to, as Sam said, the first year was, wasn't really that effective because there weren't that many issues. But this year, we've had the issue, and it's, it's a lot easier to have an ad hoc committee where the two sides can get together. And I really see that it would be advantageous to both the tribe and the city to continue the ad hoc committee for another year.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
I'll echo those comments tonight. I think as time goes by, we're, we're learning how to work together quite nicely. I think the first year was more introductory than anything, and now, now we've got a project, and I can, I can see this as, as I imagined, but is a good line of communication with the, with the tribal leadership.
Ms. Jamison?
When you have your meetings, do you just talk about the fire truck? Or do you, are there other things like traffic and continued support of sheriff and fire and recreational uses and, including us and new changes out that the tribe is making and how it might affect us? Do you get into any of that?
You know, sometimes it, it, it can turn into a chat, chat session.
Well, that's good.
And, and which, which, which I think is, is good. It's, the, the last two, Jim, Jim and I have been there. Lisa came to the last one. And we were lucky that we, we were able to meet with the full business committee. And so we, we got, you know, the, the full input. And also got, got to know some of the newer ones.
Good.
I'd like to comment that our, our ad hoc meetings with the tribe are very cordial. They're not as contentious as other ad hoc meetings that have been in the last few months, but, but ours are very, are very, very well handled, and we appreciate that. Let's talk about the fire truck. What do we, what do we want to do in participation with the, with the tribe regarding the extension of the firehouse?
Well, I like Brad's suggestion, but there's also going to be some demo on the building, isn't there?
Yes. I don't know that our staff would necessarily have the capability to do that.
And on the ballpark figure, what's worst-case scenario on cost?
You know, it's, it's kind of tough because we don't, it hasn't done any geotech work on the, on that type of structural, which is all preliminary at this point. So, you know, we're up at 250 a square foot. It really, it's not a complicated construction. We're just extending the roof down similar to what's already there. So I think we're, we're probably pretty, pretty much in the ballpark, I would hope.
Who's going to handle the bidding and the construction, contracting and oversight on that? Is that going to be the city?
Yeah, we've done, we had done the architectural oversight, and what we do is we, we pay the architect, and then the, the tribe is reimbursing us for that.
That would be for the construction also?
Yeah, it'd be probably better. I mean, I guess if the tribe wanted to do that, it could do that, but.
In, in order to, in order to show this fair in my mind, is that we, we should include the cost of the demolition work that the city would be doing, adding that into the estimated cost, total cost of the, of the project, so that we can show our contribution as a percentage or as a part of the, of the work.
Yeah, we can do that. Obviously, we still need someone to pay for the architecture and.
Yeah, right. Yeah, but, but if, if the total bill is going to be 150,000, for example, our contribution would be 20 or 30,000 on demolition, and then the balance would be handled in cash by the other participants.
If that's the direction the council chooses, we, we can run some numbers for you to then meet with the ad hoc, Chumash Ad hoc Committee with those numbers.
Can I have, can, we, we voted at one time that we would not participate in the construction of it, that we expected the, the tribe to handle all the costs.
Did we vote it?
Yes, we did.
Did we vote it? Or was it a suggestion?
I think that was discussion when you.
Discussion for you guys to take that.
That's why we have it on as an action item.
Yeah, we didn't vote on that. We just suggested that they pay for everything.
I'm sure I asked or vote on that, but maybe, maybe I didn't remember correctly.
During your update of the committee.
Well, are we going to also have to, we're gonna redo some of the parking lot also? So that would be on us?
Yes, we, we, our Parks and Rec Director, we had talked about doing some work back there anyway, reconfiguring that landscaping. If you look, there's a couple of trees that have pretty much pulled up the asphalt. And so we, we had, as a plan, we would like to redo all of that back there anyway.
Well, we don't need that wall anymore, do we?
The wall was there because there was a fuel tank, and that's, yeah. So, so all of that, we don't need anymore, and we could reconfigure that and put a nice little landscape strip back there and still make it function. So, so that would have been a city project part of that anyway. It was just gonna be down the road, a little further.
Would the, would the council give the ad hoc committee some direction as to how we proceed in dealing with the tribe over this issue of sharing the costs?
Well, I like what Brad is recommending.
I'm sorry?
I like what Brad is recommending, that would be, we would be responsible for the demolition, and that would be our in-kind.
Contribution. Do I hear any different? Okay, then we'll, we'll take that message back to the tribe that, that will be, we would participate, but there will be in-kind donations regarding the demolition of the properties outside the building envelope. Is that the, is that the correct thing? And then, and then you'll show those costs as part of the total construction costs of the expansion of the.
Yeah, we'll come up with an estimate for you to bring.
I just do want to, again, reiterate comments from previous that I, I just really feel it's important that we have this piece of apparatus here in Solvang. It's something that we recognized, that Solvang Fire recognized, actually back in the Smith days due to some incidents. And thankfully, these incidents don't pop up very often, but it is something that our guys always have to be ready and prepared for and to be able to give them the best equipment possible. It's also a great benefit to the valley being centrally located like this. So I, I think, I know this is, this is the right place for it, and I think we should do everything we need to, to ensure that it stays here.
There's, we need a motion on the ad hoc committee continuation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
That's for one year?
For one year, yeah. And with the, with, can I have a voice vote, please? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed? And, and as far as membership on the ad hoc committee, I, I think that Hans and I would like to stay on that.
I would chime in that you pretty much have to, because if you change members of an ad hoc committee, what you'd create is a serial meeting. So you, you, you can't change members on the ad hoc committee and still comply with the Brown Act. So.
Ever.
Yes.
Until it, until it's disbanded.
Right.
Okay. We're starting.
Just out of, just out of curiosity, say if one of the individuals leaves the city, do you have to disband the ad hoc committee and start another one? So you don't have a.
You certainly would have to disband one before you started another one, yes. And then you would have to be careful about the jurisdiction of the ad hoc committee so that you didn't create a serial meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And the, and the, and the other issue regarding the fire, firehouse firetruck is, we have our marching orders? Okay. With that, can I have, go to item number seven, please?
Item seven, introduction for first reading by title only and update to the water and sewer code and drought regulations.
Staff report?
Well, good, good evening, Mayor Richardson and council members. Matt Vanderlinde, your Public Works Director and City Engineer. I apologize for my sinus congestion, but I'll try to speak as clearly as I can. As indicated by the city clerk, this is the introduction for first reading by title only of ordinance to amend or modify, revise, update the water and sewer code, and more specifically focusing primarily on the drought regulations. So, as you're aware, over the last few years, we've implemented stage one and stage two drought regulations. And in each case, we had to, the city council chose to revisit the regulations and make modifications. And our current code relative to the drought regu, drought regulations was found to be out of date and in need of, in need of update. So staff is recommending that Title IX, Chapter Three, Article D, which is the Water Conservation Program, that's, that's the title of that section, which covers drought regulations now be updated. And in addition, a comprehensive review and update of the, of the remainder of Title IX has not been undertaken for many years. So in considering the update to the drought regulations, it was determined that a comprehensive review and update of, of the entire Title IX Water and Sewer Code would be appropriate at the same time. So several minor edits and a few significant revisions are proposed to Title IX, the Water and Sewer Code. And the most significant, excuse me, the most significant revisions proposed include the following. First, we would incorporate a revision to the term of the canon will certificates per previous city council action from 90 days to 180, 80 days. And then in Section Nine, two A, dash, two A, dash, two point A, the acceptable sewer lateral pipe material to be updated to eliminate cast iron and ABS pipe and allow high-density polyethylene pipe. Section Nine, dash, two B, dash, six, where sewer easements are required, the minimum easement width shall be set at 15 feet. the minimum easement width, uh, shall be set at fifteen feet. Section Nine, dash, two C, dash, three point A, uh, regarding grease, oil, sand interceptors, interceptors. They shall be required for all new restaurants and commercial establishments where food may be prepared. Uh, Section Nine, dash, two C, dash, nine point A, effective July one, two thousand seventeen, residential water softeners must be of the type that do not discharge waste or brine to the city sewer system. Section Nine, dash, three, dash, two point C, applicants for water service must accept incidental sand and silt conditions. Section Nine, dash, three A, dash, six point eight, point seven, minimum water line diameter shall be eight inch diameter, except in cul-de-sacs of less than a hundred and fifty feet where six inch diameter pipeline may be used. Section Nine, dash, three C, dash, five point B, reconnection charge is redefined as disconnection charge and shall be assessed as soon as city personnel leave the city offices to initiate a disconnection of service. It will be, and the fee will be increased from twenty-five dollars to forty-six dollars. Section Nine, dash, three C, dash, five point E, it is, it is requested that the city council discuss and consider eliminating this subsection that allows for short-term disconnections. Currently, the city code allows for customers to have their water turned off in billing period increments of thirty days, which eliminates the meter fee and sewer charge during those months. Uh, so relative to alternatives, of course, the city council could direct staff to make additional changes or revisions to Title Nine, uh, as the council deems appropriate. And, in general, there's not a significant fiscal impact to the proposed, uh, updates to Title Nine, the Water and Sewer Code. For the past several years, many of the fees and charges, uh, as exist in Title Nine today, do not adequately cover the city's costs in implementing the related provisions. Therefore, updating some of the fees and charges set forth in Title Nine will enable the city to fully recover the costs associated with implementing the reg, the related provisions. Updating the fees and charges as described or proposed is projected to generate approximately two to five thousand dollars, uh, annually addition, additional revenue. And that concludes my staff report and I'm available for any questions you might have.
Are there any questions?
I have two questions. Uh, on the brine discharge, uh, is that an item? Do, if people have a water softener that now currently does discharge brine, they have until two, uh, twenty seventeen to replace that with a non-brine discharge?
That, that's correct.
Okay, so it's, so none of, none of the brine discharge, uh, water conditions are grandfathered in forever and ever?
Correct.
We are getting rid of them.
Is there a difference between salt and potassium?
Yeah, those are both be considered, uh, a brine discharge.
But potassium is considered good for septic systems and...
Well, the, the, the problem is, uh, okay, I'm not, I'm not sure about that, but, um, the problem is it's sodium chloride or potassium chloride. And one of the primary, um, concerns is the chloride component of that.
But the salt is not good for the human being, but potassium is good for a human being.
Well, salt's good.
I just spent, I just spent a lot of time researching it, so...
Sure, I, I don't know, I don't know about that, so, um, I can't really comment on that. But I can tell you that the chloride is really bad for our sewer system and for, um, meeting our... We have a discharge, uh, regulation regarding, um, chloride. And so that's what's giving us the big problem. As well as sodium, but, but chloride, you're gonna get the chloride whether you use potassium chloride or sodium chloride as your, uh, salt in the, um, in your water softener.
Is this just us doing it or is it county or is it statewide or where is this coming from?
Uh, well, there are several agencies around California that, um, prohibit, uh, brine discharge, similar to what, what, uh, we're proposing. Um, it's not a state regulation, um, and it's not, uh, implemented statewide, but there are several agencies that do, uh, have a similar, um, prohibition. And, um, the staff feels it's really important to help us meet our waste discharge requirements from our wastewater treatment plant. So, uh, this would be implemented in con, in connection with, well, we'd be proposing a, um, what, our water softener rebate program, uh, which the city council could consider, uh, with next year's budget. And that would help, um, offset some of the costs for someone to retrofit or remove a brine-type system. But, uh, we already prohibit, the city of Solvang already prohibits, uh, brine discharge from all commercial, um, uh, properties that have water softeners. So this would just be extending that to the residential properties.
So do we know how many of these brine contaminations are in our city?
Uh, we don't know, but we do know that the chlorine, uh, or chloride levels, uh, at our wastewater treatment plant, uh, especially during these last drought years, has increased, increased dramatically. It's gone up about three times.
Because the water's been so bad.
Well, it, it, it is true that it's partly due to the source water. Uh, when there's less state water available, uh, as the water moves through the Bay Delta, there's, um, uh, a lo, well, the, the water quality degrades a little bit. And so there is more, a little more mineral content, uh, in the state water than normal, uh, during drought years because there's less water flowing through. And the water's flowing slower, so there's more evaporation, so that the minerals become slightly concentrated as it moves through the system. So, that is true, but, uh, the primary culprit is our own local water. Uh, you know, we've been relying on our wells a lot more, of course, and, um, unfortunately, that, that creates a problem for us when people have water softeners, because it puts a lot of added salt into the, into the wastewater system that gets to the wastewater treatment plant.
So what are the alternatives that people have besides going to Culligan?
Rain.
Or rain.
Yeah, there's, there are three, uh, water softening companies that service our area. One is Culligan, the other's Rain, and, um, I think the other one's called like Pure Water Systems or something. Uh, so there are three options, uh, relative to the canister-type, um, exchange tank, uh, water softening units. And then, of course, the other alternative, which, you know, it's not desirable, but it's just remove your water softener completely.
But then do you know what happens to the appliances when you do that? And your piping, what happens?
Yeah, yeah, I, you know, it takes a little more elbow grease to clean them and, you know, remove them.
Well, it's a little hard to clean your pipes out when they get full of all that gunk.
Yeah. Well, it's your decision. I, I'm just telling you that, uh, we recommend it because it's a big problem for the wastewater treatment plant.
How, how big of a problem is it?
Well...
Where are we? Are we on like the ninety-ninth percentile?
Uh, no, we're, we're currently exceeding our waste discharge, uh, limits for chlorine, for, or chloride, sorry.
By a lot?
Well, uh, three years ago, we were like, well, I, I can't quote you the exact numbers, but, but, uh, I don't, I don't have it right off the top of my head, but, but we're, yeah, like twenty percent over, something like that.
Any other questions?
One other question. Uh, you were talking, I think you mentioned, uh, sand and sediment. We have to, the, our customers are going to have to believe that sand and sediment will be coming through our pipes also.
Right, I thought you might ask, uh, ask about that. So, um, as you may be aware, we flush our water lines periodically, which during a drought, we do that less to try to conserve the water, not waste it, because it essentially gets wasted. Um, so what happens when our wells operate and the water we get through the state system and if we get water from ID one, these are all, um, these, all of these sources have small amounts of silt and sand that get pumped up into the water system. It's totally inert, it's, it's non-harmful, but, uh, those, um, sediments accumulate at the low end of the systems or anywhere where there's a low point in the system. And so, what is normally done is you start at the upper end of your system and you select fi, fire hydrants and you flush those and it pulls the sediment down. Then you go a little further, a little lower in your system and you flush those hydrants and it keeps pulling all the sediment down to the bottom end of your system and you flush it out.
Someone was cleaning out the aerators on my kitchen sink because it wasn't flowing right and there's all this little grit. It was, the grit was coming from the sediment in the pipes, not through the, uh, deterioration of my water pipes. Okay.
Well, it could be, could be both. I don't, I don't know specifically, but, but, uh, anyway, there was a claim recently, uh, as the city, also when, when, um, water lines are constructed, uh, they do flush them, but, and they disinfect them, but sometimes there's a little bit of sediment and stuff. It gets fully disinfected, it's totally safe, it's not harmful in any way, but, uh, some of that is in there. When we have leaks, we go out and repair and there is a little bit, we disinfect, we flush the lines, but there's always this little bit of accumulation of silt, uh, and sand in the, in the distribution system. And we had a claim recently from a customer who, um, rather than fight with them and dispute it, uh, we looked at the, their, their claim and, and chose to just, you know, settle with them, compensate them for damage. I think it was to their, like, uh, water heater. But, um, anyway, so this would put this in our code. There, there's really, this is really common with every water system around the country. And, uh, so I, staff felt that this would just protect the city a little bit and make it clear to customers that they're accepting the water. They have to accept that there might be a little bit of silt, uh, stirred up in the system from time to time and, uh...
Rats, I, I changed my water heater because it kinda corroded out. I could have come in and said the city's water messed up my water heater. Damn, damn!
Are there any other questions?
I, yeah, I have a couple more. Um, on number eight, it says that, um, it's about the disconnect and you say it's going from twenty-five to forty-six. That's the total charge or that's the hourly charge?
Uh, that's the total charge.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then...
But it's based on our estimate of staff time required to, to disconnect and reconnect.
And then on number seven, where you're talking about a water line dam, diameter of eight inches? What water line? The water mains?
This would be, yeah, so for any new development that comes in, if they're gonna propose water, water, an expansion of the city's water system?
Okay.
Basically just states that the eight inch diameter is the minimum unless...
Well, when I read this, I think of having to have an eight inch water line that is going to have to be coming up to my house. I think we need to make that a little clearer. Yes.
Yeah, I think, um...
And maybe within that paragraph, there's, you know, we are just seeing one line here, maybe it...
Right, right. That section is actually covering the system.
In the paragraph, okay.
One other question here. Um, and you're, uh, number two, the sewer laterals have been updated to eliminate cast iron and ABS and we are now requiring the high-density polypropylene, uh, that, that's for any new construction?
Right, PVC lateral is the primary material that's used and, but this would also allow the, uh, high-density polyethylene or the HDPE pipe to be used. So two different alternate materials.
So, so the old sewer lines of the orange brook pipe, which is really awful, and the clay sewer lines, uh, pipes which were put in in the early fifties, they are now going the way of the passenger pigeon, correct?
Yeah, for our main lines, we would still be allowing the, the, the vitrified clay pipe, but with the laterals that are going through the parkway areas because of the trees and everything, um, they're more susceptible to root damage, so...
I have a couple of questions. On, on number one, uh, I'm not an English major or anything, but I think that the way that can and will serve certificates is spelled out here is not correct. It's, it's a can and will serve certificate and it should be one, one word?
Okay.
Okay, and it's in the, it's in the, uh, back in the, back in the rules that way and so it should be corrected, I think, because it's a, it is a can and will serve certificate, not can and will serve certificate. Uh, number, and then...
Can and will serve certificate.
Yes.
Great, got it.
Then, then why are we extending it to a hundred and eighty days from ninety days?
We already did that.
Yeah, the council voted on that and it's been almost a year now.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
Was that a good thing? Well, the reason I, the reason I...
I think, I think we did that because there were a number of people that were coming in to get water meters because they knew we might not be issuing can and will serves anymore. So we wanted to give them time to be able to construct their, their buildings.
Well, my, my thought is, is that, that in these times of drought, if it was a ninety-day time limit, that we could control the can and will serves a little, a little more closely. Uh, if they don't, if they don't build, if they don't use a can and will serve within ninety days, then we may not allow them to have a can and will serve due to, uh, due to drought conditions.
Well, if I call, recall correctly, for the larger projects during a drought, time of drought, the staff would be bringing those projects to city council for a decision. And so you wouldn't allow can and will serve letter to be issued if you had serious concerns.
But if there was one at a hundred and eighty days and we were in ninety days into a hundred and eighty days and discovering we're in a drought, we couldn't do anything about it. We'd have to allow them to continue the build. No, because we issued the can and will serve for six months.
I think on that hundred and eighty days, that, we, we were, there were problems getting things to that point in ninety days.
Through the process.
It was difficult to complete, yeah.
We, we stretched it out to one eighty, that was more a realistic date.
There's so many steps in the process and, and plans to be prepared and permits and so forth. And to not, uh, grant somebody at least a hundred and eighty days, um, it, it adds a lot of problems for the, any applicant because they're, they're now at a really high risk because they're gonna be spending money for architectural and engineering services and stuff and they don't wanna spend all that and then have the...
Is, is that a common term, uh, term, I mean, limit? Is a hundred and eighty days on these can and will serves or are they permanent when they're issued or what?
Well...
Before construction?
Different areas do handle it differently. Um, about a hundred and eighty days, you know, six months is a very reasonable. It's not excessive, let me just put it that way.
You know, to plan a house, have it drawn and get it through building and get it, you know, it takes a long time.
I, I understand, I'm there for you. Uh, regarding the, uh, the, uh, water softeners, um, I would like to see that any new water softeners installed shall not distribute, shall not be dumped into the sewer system. That's one, one possibility. And then, uh, the, the other question I have is, what about, there are two other options about, about, uh, taking care of brine. One is to dump it into this, into the wastewater, into the, uh, stormwater, storm sewers.
Hmm, no.
Mm-mm.
Who knows? I understand who knows, but who says we can't?
Federal government and the, and the State Water Resources Control Board.
That's okay.
Fish and game, fish and wildlife.
All right, all right, all right. That's, that's the, that's one option. The other option...
That NPDES permit, yeah, we're...
The other option is just dumping it on the ground on your property.
Kill all your grass.
Well, what...
Well, you can do it with potassium, but you can't do it with salt.
Well, you, you, I mean, there are driveways or there are dirt driveways or there are other areas within properties that you could dump that brine, uh, waste?
Well, here's, here's the thing. The, what the staff is trying to do is, there's a couple of things. We're trying to always look ahead at what possible future regulations might hit us and try to make decisions now to put the city in the best possible position to incur the least amount of costs in the future. So, we don't have a crystal ball, but we can kinda see from past history of how regulations are going and we can talk to, uh, staff at State Water Resources Control Board or the Region Water Quality Control Board and kinda get an idea of kinda where the direction that regulations, future regulations may go. Uh, one of the most important things for our, um, area is to minimize and if possible, eliminate the accumulation of salts in our basin. Because what happens is anything you put on the ground, eventually it's percolating down into the water. So, if you, by having water softeners, what we're doing is we're taking salt, we're taking salt from, from somewhere out of the area or whatever, a factory, then they truck it here and, and we're putting in our water softeners and all the chloride goes in and is adding to our basin. So it's adding all the salt that was never there before. And then that eventually is gonna, it has been slowly raising the salt levels in our groundwater. And then you put that into the system and add more salt to it. It goes to the treatment plant and goes... It goes to the treatment plant and goes to the percolation pond and back in. So you're, over the long, long period, not just five years or ten years, but you know, forty, fifty years, you're slowly accumulating salts within your basin. And it's been said that we don't really have a water, water supply problem. We have a salt problem. Uh, you know, in terms of water quality and.
Is there a possibility that any new, any plumbing construct, any plumbing work being done in a, in a residence that requires an inspection could require that that water softener be changed out or be, be eliminated or changed to a different style rather than saying that they're prohibited? And how would you enforce the prohibition?
Well, certainly enforcement is, would be tricky, but.
Yeah, I'm gonna hide mine.
I have a, I have a place where Anne Frank used to live that I would hide one.
Yeah, I mean.
See, see, see who buys a hundred, a hundred pounds of salt at a time.
This isn't a surefire method, but, but if we have that in place, one of the things that also helps us with is with the regulatory agencies. So that we can show to the state that, hey, we've banned these, you know, in our code.
Rather than, in my mind, rather than saying they must be that effective, that date, that those, that water softeners will no longer be allowed. And, and that's what you're saying, that they'll no longer be allowed because they have to recirculate and refresh.
The type that.
Except, except the tank, tank replacement, right.
They can replace it with a canister type.
And they dump that out in the ocean so the salt doesn't have any effect.
Correct.
Um, but the, but the actual enforcement of that and, and that sort of thing seems to me to be a kind of a, a problem.
Well, what we would do is we'd have a process, well, first of all, for commercial properties that have, that use a lot of water are typically restaurants and hotels. So we have a process where our sewer inspector does periodic checks and inspections on the properties. And, but for residential, we'd have to work with our building department. And when somebody comes in for a building permit, we would have some kind of process where we'd verify that it's been removed.
That's acceptable in my mind because that's an additional cost.
Yeah, because we're not, we're not gonna, we don't have the resources to go out and.
And, and if you do this, if, if.
If this gets implemented.
If in December of twenty seventeen, you discover a water softener in use and the, and the resident refuses to change it out, what are your actions that you can take?
Well, if it gets adopted into, into our code, then my understanding is, Roy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have a general provision in our code for like a violation.
We, we have a full quiver of arrows to use on any municipal code violation. So these would be no different. Uh, and so.
Wouldn't there be, have to be a, a schedule of penalties?
There's an automatic schedule of penalties, but this is the kind of one that what you really want is compliance. It's, I mean, almost ninety-nine percent of the time when you're doing municipal code enforcement, the, the penalties are relevant to your decision-making process because you're never gonna make, the, the penalties are never gonna pay for the administration. So you're pursuing it because it's important goal to the city to get that particular type of compliance. So you, you start with the, the most velvet colored brick that you have. And then you work your way up until you get compliance. And with, by far and away with most people, you, all you usually have to do is point out that you do own velvet colored bricks, covered bricks, and you get the job done. Every once in a while, you've got to take things a step further. We do have the administrative citation program. But you don't automatically give an administrative citation every time you find somebody with a compliance issue. Because if you can ask them to comply and they do, then that's, that's the goal, compliance is the goal. Uh, so you step those things up and you have a, a not very active administrative fine program. That's a good thing. What, what that means is, is that most of the time, just communicating with people gets the job done. And every once in a while, you have to take things up. So, but we've had, and we've had to go beyond administrative fines extremely rarely in the last twenty years. So, but all of those avenues are available from phone calls to letters, to administrative citations, to you could cite them, use infractions, which is criminal court. Uh, you could technically sue in civil court to get a judge to order someone to comply. We've never had, when, all the time I've been here, we've never had to do that. Have, I've, I've done that in other cities because you've run into people who, until the judge says, if you don't do this, you're going to jail because you offended me, they won't get with the program. But yeah, it's, all of those arrows are technically available to you, but they won't have to be used.
The, the possibility of, of helping people eliminate the water softeners by grants or rebates or those sorts of things?
Yeah, the, the, um, the water softener rebate program that we've actually already developed all the forms and everything. Uh, we were trying to get other agencies in San Luis Valley to partner with us, but we didn't get a lot of support. But it would provide a grant to cover a majority of the costs to retrofit a, um, a self-regenerating, uh, water softener system with a canister type. It'll cover most of the costs to change that out and then also help with the annual costs for the first two years is what's proposed in the, in the program right now.
You have something to say?
Well, I was just gonna, one, one alternative between the language that's currently written and not achieving the compliance goals would be to change that date by which they have to be removed. And then your staff can time the program that's gonna come back to you for the rebate program with a, a later target date for removal. And that way you, you can accomplish both of those goals and you have that rebate program in place enough time ahead of time.
Could, could, could we incorporate, could we incorporate water softening in the same, under the same category as wastewater treatment or as water itself be a utility provided by the city at a cost? To do the, the tank exchange contract with a contractor, get a franchise with a contractor that will service those tanks under the auspices of the city? If you understand what I'm trying to say, like we do trash pickup. We get bids and we get the best price. And something like that we could, that would handle the, the tank transfer, tank exchanges and those sorts of things.
Well, I'm, I'm not quite sure I fully understand what, what you're saying, but.
Let, let me answer the.
But right now, the, the competitive process between the three companies that serve this area, they're all competing for business and so they're all, there's an incentive there for them to keep trying to come up with new programs.
What I'm envisioning is the same way that we do the wastewater, the trash pickup. Is that we get competitive bids from these various suppliers and as, as a city, handle, handle that franchise.
And how, what, what benefit do you see from that?
Sorry, what benefit?
What benefit do you see? I'm, I'm not really following.
It's, it's the same, it's a competitive benefit, just like we do with the, with the trash haulers. Is that we can negotiate as a city with the people that swap out water softener tanks.
Oh, like offering a franchise, they have the exclusive rights and so they'll give a lower rate. Okay, I'm sorry.
And, and possibility of including, possibility of including that fee within our water, our water bills. And then the city could help subsidize that process. Because we're, what we're doing is we're taking a major investment these people have in water softeners and telling them that they, their, their money has gone down the drain. It depreciates the value of the house and all those sorts of things, not have a water softener system in their, in their homes. So, and I, I think that's kind of the, reaching out a little bit beyond what the city should do to, to private residences. Uh, new, new construction, yes.
And remodels.
That's the condition.
Remodels.
And remodels, yes. Those things are part of the, the overall costs of remodeling. But to, but to ask folks to take out their water softeners is, I think is probably stepping over a line someplace.
It's your prerogative. Well, however you direct us, we'll do it.
So those are suggestions. Any other discussion?
I just, I just wanted to ask on the benchmark year, I noticed the only, the only year I see anywhere, and that's in the old one, is nineteen eighty-six. Yeah, yeah, we, I'm, I'm assuming we're probably using two thousand thirteen.
Well, we're not, we're not putting it in the code, so we don't have the same thing. In, in five years or ten years, the next cycle comes in, now you're locked into twenty thirteen. So it's set, as set by resolution of the council. So you would, if you enact those in your resolution, you'll, you'll do the baseline year. You'll determine that. So, yeah, we, we didn't think it was prudent to follow that previous mistake of, of codifying a year.
Okay, yeah. So with the next drought cycle, staff would recommend one or two possible years as, for the city council to set as the benchmark year and then you would just make a decision on that.
Is there any other discussion, questions?
I have a question about turning off somebody's water for non-payment. Meaning that then their fire sprinklers don't also operate. Or do we have any liability there?
The short answer is no. People always file papers because it just takes a typewriter and, well, now it's about five hundred dollars. But, but the, the short answer is no. If people, if people don't pay their water bill, they have no reasonable expectation that the water's been, come through their sprinklers.
Okay, in some, in some communities, they have to have two meters, one for fire and one for domestic use. And they can't turn off the one that's for fire, no matter what. So is that?
I would say on that one there, if it's a separate meter for fire, it's not being utilized. The only time, the only time the fire, fire sprinkler water meter is when there's a fire. So on that one there, they aren't being used for the water, they aren't using the water, they aren't being charged for the water. The only thing that they're being charged for water is on their domestic use. So on that one there.
Well, they're being charged for the meter too.
Meter charge, but you know, we don't know what, what these cities' meter charges are. No.
They're a lot less than ours.
Yeah, but, but we do, but we have, no, we do not, you know, maybe if you went and talked to, if we decide that. Right, right now we have agricultural meters or landscape meters in town. A lot, a lot of the commercial buildings have landscape meter. So we have, our motel has landscape water meter. And our water usage on that one now is very low.
Because you have beautiful grass.
Yeah, because I, I spent a whole bunch of money on artificial grass.
Right.
And I'm getting a rebate from the city because I did it.
Is there any other questions? The staff report?
Seeing none, thank you much.
I got one. Just, yeah, really quick with the, the brine and the water softener. I want to say that I support what Matt's saying about removing the extra, the excess salt from the system. And it could be a thing that is implemented, but doesn't have to be a very strict enforcement. But it could phase out over time, you know, the use of it. And then on top of that, I mean, if we do end up doing the treatment plant, if the softeners are for better water quality, we'll end up having better water quality. And I don't think it's a bad thing. I think it's, it's good for the system.
I have one more question. Uh, for the homeowner recharge, you know, what we're talking about. Do we have an idea what the lifespan of those type of water conditioners are?
The exchange tank system?
No, the, the, the self.
Oh, the self-regenerating?
So, what we're doing is, what we're trying to ban.
Oh, I understand. Uh, yeah, so most of those systems last ten to fifteen years. It kind of varies. I, I, you know, I've seen them last, yeah, fifteen years.
So, but, so a lot of them, if somebody's had one in for five years, it's, it's gonna, it's.
It lasts five to ten more years.
Five to ten more. So it's either halfway, halfway to a third of its life. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Matt. I have no speaker slips. Does anyone in the public wish to speak? Yes, Fred?
Good call. So let me get this straight. Bring in all this salt and then somebody's gotta cart the salt out. Somebody's gonna have to do away with that salt somewhere else. So I'm gonna have to pay, I pay for bringing the salt in and then I'm gonna have to pay for taking the salt out. Why in the hell isn't the city giving me water that's soft to begin with? Then this whole problem would go away. Now they're, so deliver up, fix up your water system, deliver up water that's soft, soft, period. Then you don't have to go through this whole headache. You guys are missing the point. That's number one. Number two is you're fixated on just brine systems for soft water. There's other solutions. You mentioned it earlier. Decal, only what's wrong with a huge reverse osmosis system on your water delivery system? You go up to Alaska or my, okay, you go to Anchorage. All the homes have huge reverse osmosis systems. They're part of building the house. Huge. Works good. So that's point of service. Well, I'd like to see the point of service back at your, at your wells. The other thing, the last item, why can't the wastewater treatment plant remove the chloride? Why isn't that even being talked about, thought about? Then you don't have to go through any of this big headache that you've, that you've created here. See? Think outside the box. There's other solutions. There's electronic solution for making soft water, a high voltage discharge. There's other systems out there. I'd like to have a rebate program for that. You guys provide one. Other solutions. I'll tell you one thing. I've already had to replace my pipes. My copper pipes were gone. Nineteen seventy-eight that house was built. You can do the math. Three years ago, I had to go, all of the pipes were gone. You could just squeeze it with your hand. Why can't you just do what I did? How about a rebate program for PEX? That's what I put in. I've got four PEX lines now running through my attics. And that pretty much solved the problem, except I have to pummel the, the, uh, the bathroom toilets about every six months, okay, because of the buildup there. So guys, give me soft water. And, oh, by the way, the water that comes from a state project, that doesn't have a, a one part per billion chloride, potassium or sodium. It's all removed over there at Kettleman City. It's the purest of the pure. So, you know, there's all kinds of things here. Again, please look at the big picture before you do all of this that you think you have to do. Because it's the money that's coming out of my pocket, the rate payer's pocket. Let me hear about that. You guys were elected to represent the rate payers. You guys need to do a better job.
Thank you, Fred. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, would you like to respond, Matt?
Why not? Uh, okay, well, it is correct that it is much less expensive to remove the salt at the beginning of the system, so from the water supply, than it is to try to remove it at the wastewater treatment plant. So the microorganisms and bacteria that, that, that digest the sewage at the sewage treatment plant, they're not able to remove minerals from the water. So we have looked, if you recall, when we were looking at the water treatment plant and locating that, one of the, one of the things we had looked at is creating a facility large enough where we could in the future add lime softening. So the city of Lompoc does remove salt at the front end from, from the, the water supply. You know, so that way the water going into the system right from the beginning is lower in salts. But that's a multi-million dollar facility. And as you're aware, we're trying to keep our water rates as low as possible. So when you have a canister type system, you don't use salt. So there, so his, Mr. Colwell's comments about bringing salt in and then bringing it out. So there, so his, Mr. Colville's comments about bringing salt in and then bringing it out or whatever. With a canister type system, you don't, you aren't bringing any salt in. Canisters remove it, the canisters get regenerated at a facility that discharges to a wastewater treatment plant that has an ocean outfall, like you were saying, Mayor Richardson. So with the canisters type, you're not bringing the salt in. By, by doing this, yes, there's some negative aspects of it. You know, the mineral deposits and things that have to be cleaned, but it's the least expensive way for the city to deal with the problem. So we have looked at, you know, the possibility of lime softening in the future. The, the one thing also is, if, in Lompoc, they have several wells that pump through, um, what they call, uh, raw water lines to a central facility. So they have wells located around, and they have these raw water lines that pump it to the central facility. They remove the salt, and then it gets pumped into their distribution system. So we have our wells, river wells, and these wells all over. So, to put in an infrastructure to pump it to a central lime softening facility, that would be really, really expensive. If you, um, if you, uh, put small, um, facilities at each wellhead, then now you've, you've got the, the brine waste, with, even with RO and all these processes, you have a brine waste that you gotta get rid of. So, uh, most of the places that you hear that, that implement these systems, they discharge to the ocean. And, um, so they have that ability, uh, which we don't have that. So if there was a brine line or a, a, um, salt sewer line that went through the San Andreas Valley to Lompoc and discharged to the ocean, then we'd have that option, but that in itself would be a multi-multi-million dollar facility. So we don't, we have looked at it. This is what staff feels is at least a first step, the most economical way to make a good dent in the problem, and, um...
What, what impact, uh, does CSD have on our wastewater treatment? And will they be allowed to keep their water softeners? Or can we, uh, regulate their water softeners also?
Yeah, we would, this, this, um, we would require that they implement a similar regulation.
Okay, thank you. No other public comment? Bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Anybody have any comments, thoughts, ideas?
I'll just make a comment in regards to what Matt just talked about, is that, uh, Mr. Colville said, you know, he doesn't want raised water rates. To put in a system of reverse osmosis or a central treatment plant, that's gonna cost money. That's gonna run your water rates up. We're looking at something that is, uh, trying to improve the quality of our, particularly our discharge water. Looking at the state of California and a lot of the environment, they are going to be coming down on our discharge lines fairly shortly. Uh, you look over in a lot of the San Joaquin Valley, and I would not be surprised if around here, where you aren't gonna start running into problems where, oh, oh, pardon me, for the last couple of years in the San Joaquin Valley, the salt, uh, content of the discharge water, uh, going into the ground has started to come up percolating through the ground. And there's literally thousands of acres of formerly productive farmland that's no longer productive because of high salt concentrations in the, uh, ground. It's, uh, not a nice thing to say, but you know, unfortunately, we live in an area which has extremely hard water. And also in regards to your PEX, Fred, uh, if you take, be careful in about another four to five years. Uh, PEX has had a reputation of becoming brittle in about that kind of timeframe. And there's a number of places that have outlawed PEX in the country, so. A lot of things are supposed to have a fifty-year life that don't have a fifty-year life. But hopefully yours will. But, uh, it, it's, but it's, uh, uh, one of those things. We're trying to do something here that is the least intrusive. And I think the proposals that the, uh, city staff has come up with is probably the least intrusive over, over the long, uh, long, uh, period of time.
I'd like to suggest that we restate, uh, item five. Something to the effect that, uh, remodels, new builds, uh, any, any kind of a, uh, of a permit that requires plumbing, that the water softener be, uh, changed out, removed, uh, something. Comments?
I can see new construction.
New construction. That they could go to, to, to the tank replacement systems?
Yeah, yeah, new construction. Uh, you know, remodels depending on what it is, you know, if you're-
If you, any kind of plumbing remodel.
Yeah, but if you, if you've got a new system, if you've just recently put a new system in, you have the same problem as, as, as somebody, uh, who... So if, um, I would tie it to a rebate whenever we can get that put together. You know, you, you were talking about timing it, uh, to, to where there would, would be a rebate.
Yeah, so we could modify this so that, uh, any new water softener installed must be the canister type. That's the first thing. The second thing would be, anyone who does a, a new construction or major remodel, they're only allowed to use the canister type. And then, uh, allow, we could, we could run our, uh, uh, water softener rebate program for three or four, how many ever years. And instead of, uh, July 1, 2017, make that 2018, 1920, to give people ample time. And that gives them multi-years. We wanted to give them over a year advance warning, but that would give them several years. And that would slowly accomplish, you know, the same goal, just over like five years instead of a year and a half.
Yeah. I, I can agree with something like that, that stretches it out, so gives plenty of people plenty of time to, to, uh, to consider remodels and re, and new builds. And then the rebate would be the actual cost of, of, of altering from a brine tank to a, to the, uh, exchange-out tanks?
We talked to a couple different, um, of the suppliers and asked them approximately the cost to change out a, um, a self-regenerating water softener to a canister type. And, um, they estimated it was somewhere in the order of a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars. And so I think our rebate right now, we're proposing to cover a hundred dollars of that cost. And then, um, we looked at the difference in monthly charge for the canister type versus the monthly cost for, um, buying salt. And the rebate covered about seventy-five percent, I think, of that difference, uh, for a two-year period. And, and you'd get a credit on your water bill.
Yeah, so, so you, you would be looking at just the material you put in, not necessarily the value of the, uh, the unit itself?
Not, I don't understand.
Well, when, when, when you get one of these systems where you, you dump the, like, like mine is potassium-
Right.
Chloride, and I forget how much it was, but it was, you know, it was, it was quite a bit of money.
Six, seven hundred dollars in some cases, for a re, for a water softener unit.
Yeah, it was like a thousand to two thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, it was, I think it was somewhere in the, between a thousand and two thousand.
Right, okay.
So, um, um, you know, so I'll, I'll be amortizing that over a period of, of time. But then I have the, the, uh, ongoing expense of the, um, of the, um...
The mon-
The, the, yeah, the monthly charge.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, so that, that's what would be-
Correct.
I think he's saying that the city would play, or the rebate would cover seventy percent of that?
For a two-year period.
Two years.
Okay.
And you don't actually have a rebate program on the agenda tonight?
Right.
So it's, it's okay, it's, yeah, it's okay to discuss it because it's relevant to your decision-making, but you, you weren't gonna be able to vote on what that rebate program is going to, to look like tonight.
Yeah, I think what staff's hearing is you'd like to see a rebate program in our budget for next year, and we can come up with-
I'd like to see some wordsmithing done on this item five. That would, uh, that would-
Is that-
That we could either do it tonight, or, or pull this item five out of the, out of the thing and go ahead with the rest of the-
Did you like what I stated, or?
No, I don't like it.
No, I mean, the, the alternative, you know, that I verbally stated.
The alternative? The alternative of stretching the time, yes.
Yeah, and-
And a rebate program for the exchange?
Let, uh, let's not put the rebate program in, in this code.
But, but-
But, 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 but it's, it's gotta be considered in order for this thing to be effective, this paragraph to be effective.
So they, he would come back next time.
So, so I, I would, I would suggest that the, the paragraph references new builds and remodels-
Right.
Or any, any, uh, reconstruction of a home that requires a plumbing inspector, or plumbing inspection, be required to, to modify their soft water, soft water system.
Yeah.
That would be a part of the overhead. They change out a faucet, they have to have a, or a re-piping, then they have to, to change out the water softener or eliminate it.
If that's the consensus, we'll, we'll do that for next time.
Okay.
Another thing we could do tonight is just remove that change from your action.
That's what I would suggest, is remove five.
And then, and then bring back the proposed language as part of the rebate program. And that way you could get this ordinance and all the other ninety-nine things in it done, have it done on second reading. Because we don't actually have the language to give to you tonight. That means it would be a first reading next time anyway, and you still wouldn't have the rebate program in front of you. And if we're gonna consider moving the, the enforcement date from 2017 to 2018 or even later, then there's no reason for staff to rush either the rebate program or the language for the five. Let's take the time to get that part right, and we'll still be able to achieve all staff's goals and your goals.
Table the whole process, or should we just eliminate that paragraph?
I'm saying, I, I would recommend, uh, just eliminating that paragraph and approving the rest.
I'm gonna make, I'll make a motion that we accept recommendation with the exception of, in paragraph three discussion, we remove item number five, nine dash two C dash nine decimal, A decimal, uh, effective 2017. That is to be removed from this, uh, action, and that we accept the balance of the proposal, of, of staff's proposal.
Uh, we still are looking for a direction on whether you want to eliminate the section number, on, on number nine, where we have the short-term disconnections. That's in our code right now. Um, it's not a good business practice to allow people to suspend their service and not pay. So I'm not sure what the history of how that got in there, but we've got, you know, probably a dozen people who leave for three, four months, and then they just disconnect their service and they make no payment to us. So that, because that's allowed per code. So we do, we would like some direction from you because it, it will have an impact on some of our customers. Particularly, then rentals also can fall into that, sometimes they're empty for a while. But, so we would like a specific direction on if you want us to continue that, or, or eliminate that from the code.
Do you find, do you find folks are, are eliminating their water for a period of three or four months?
We have about a dozen people that we would call snowbirds, or they leave for three to four months, and they do disconnect.
How about, how about those at a, a month or so? Are there very many of those?
Not too many. What, what we do get is we get rentals. So the, so a rental may be empty for two months, and the, and the, the owner may disconnect for that two-month period till a tenant comes in and pays. What'll happen now, if you eliminate that, then the owner will be responsible to continue the base fees.
Uh, you know, I, I can understand the snowbird thing. If we, if we stretched the, the billing period to like ninety days, that, that they could turn off their water for ninety days and-
Yeah, well, to be honest, it still costs us-
It's gonna cost?
We still are, we have to be able to pr, to provide them that water. So there is no discount to our operating costs by them being gone for three months, to be honest. So it is, I'm, I did not do the history to find out why that was put in there. Um, it's not a good business practice to allow people to just not pay.
So you're suggesting eliminating this-
Eliminating that, that disconnection, uh, language.
I can agree with that.
Yeah, the short-term disconnection.
And then I'd, I'd, well, that, so that'll amend the, the motion? That will amend that motion then?
I will, I will accept that, that proposal.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to amend the motion to correct that, uh, can and will serve sentence. To, to put a can hyphen and hyphen will, uh, and will serve certificate as a one-word thing, because that's what it is. Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
I got a question. So is the snowbird, or the, is that time period, is that in or out? What is, where does that stand?
Item nine is out.
Completely, not even thirty days.
Yeah, zero days.
Well, it was a minimum of thirty-day increments. So you couldn't come in and say, hey, I wanna, I wanna avoid my meter fee by shutting the water off for two weeks. It had to be a minimum of a billing period. So you had to have it off for thirty days to be able to not pay the meter fee and the sewer fee. But you could do up to nine, you know, you do ninety, you could do thirty-day increments of turning your water off.
Can we just have it one thirty day to compromise?
The, the way I understand it is to eliminate, to put zero days.
Well, I'm just saying that it still does cost us to have that customer-
Right, or are you suggesting we eliminate it, uh, billing increments down to zero days?
Well, there'd be no grace, there'd be no grace, uh, period for the shut-off. But I think we should do thirty days. If it was ninety days, what if we just gave thirty days? Scale it back, but not completely eliminate it.
Yeah, it's not, it's not the thirty days that are, is critical, it's those longer-term ones. But in, in the thirty, it'll just, that'll be, now, all the tenant and rent, renters, those types of things, will still be able to not pay for that month, because they'll get thirty days. So the minute, thirty days is the minimum that you have to have the service disconnected to make, to get the savings. Well, I think we were, I think staff, Matt was saying that he would prefer not to have that, uh, the section in there that allows you to have a short-term disconnection. Either you disconnect, or you-
So you're simi, eliminating nine dash three C dash five dot E?
Just that whole entire-
Delete that?
Entire section, yeah.
Is that, is that a suitable amendment to your, uh, motion?
I would say no, because it's one of these things, I know a number of people who le, le, leave for a couple of months, and if they aren't around utilizing the water, you know, in, in the sewer, I don't see why they, you know.
We, we gotta have capacity for it, though.
Yeah.
We gotta have capacity. We have to have that standing by, we gotta be able to serve.
That's the argument we get from ID one.
Whether they're there or not. If we, if we, if we could cut back on our sewer plant, if we could cut back on our water production because we know ten people are gonna be gone, and, and save, you know, point zero five percent of our, um, operating expense, yeah, it'd be great, but we're not going to.
That's the argument ID one gives us for our on-demand rate, is that we, they have to be there to provide the water, so therefore we have to pay for it. So, uh, you, would, you don't want to accept that amendment?
Even, so, even if they give a notice in advance? I mean, wouldn't that give us a heads up on having a service, or?
We still have a system capacity that we have to provide, at our wastewater plant and our water system plant. So we, unless we knew, say, ten percent of the customers were gonna be gone three months out of the year, we could change our operational, uh, we could have less volume needed. But, but it doesn't really work that way. You still, you, it, hands hit around the head. We still have to be able to serve the full capacity of the system, and that's why we have meter fees to help support the, the rates.
The biggest thing with this is taking care is, we aren't charging meter fee. Because if they aren't there, they would still get their meter fee, but they are being charged.
So they're not paying any usage while they're not there. Yeah, and that, that still would be the case. They would just have to pay a meter fee, and there would be no usage, so they would have no usage fee.
Will you accept that amendment? If not, I'll, I'll-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
I'll throw a substitute motion if you won't do that. You're gonna withdraw?
I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
Okay. Does anybody else like to make the motion? Well, I'll make the motion. His motion plus- eliminating nine dash three C dash five dash E, dot E. And including the can and will serve notes, and, and eliminating nine two, nine two C, nine dot A, until further, we'll table that right now. Can I have a second?
So what are we removing? What are those nine two nine- What are those nine two, nine five, seven, whatever? What are those numbers? What is it?
It's on, it's on our sheet.
Right, I got that, but can we read the context or what, what exactly?
He's eliminating the water softener change language.
Right, eliminating water softener change.
That'll be removed. He'll, he will be eliminating the section that allows for short-term disconnections. Those are the two items that he's eliminating from, from the rule.
Then we'll correct the spelling on...
Can and will serve certificate.
I'm looking for a second.
I've got a question.
Motion dies for lack of second.
No, he has a question.
I, I have a question.
Okay, ask your question.
Um, on, um, on nine, the last one, uh, with, with the, with the disconnect or the turn-off, is there a fee to turn off or, and turn on?
No, there's a, only if you're shut off for non-payment, then there's this, the disconnection fee that, that used to be called the reconnection fee. We don't charge for your initial turn-on or turn-off.
Okay, but if somebody wants to interrupt for a couple of months?
No.
There is no charge for that?
They, they call up, they get a dis- we go out, turn the water off and then noting the system that it's off and it's gonna be off. They, if they're gonna, if they're gonna try to waive their fee, they then need to let us know how long it's gonna be and it has to be a minimum of thirty days.
But I thought our goal was to be full-cost recovery. That's taking time, maybe if they knew...
Could, could we, okay, just a thought, could we put that in? If, if you wanna, if you wanna turn off your water for, you know, a period of time, uh, you're going on vacation for three or four months, uh, get a turn, turn-off, turn-on fee? I g- I could buy something like that.
Buy that, yeah. Because that might help recover the cost of standby water.
Well, the fee that you're, that you're considering right now for the disconnection is forty-six dollars. A meter fee, a monthly meter fee is about seventy-two for the smallest meter that you have. So if they're off for three months, you're not recovering that cost, so...
That, that part's true.
Right.
But, but as...
But you recover something.
We're, we're recovering some.
We don't have to use that forty-six-dollar fee.
But we're gonna charge, we're gonna charge them to turn it back on, too.
Yeah, I, I would say forty-six bucks to turn it off, for forty-six bucks to turn it on. So, no, we're not gonna, we're, we're not gonna recover fully, but at least we're, we're getting something we're not getting now.
And there would be a decis- decision element in the, in the people, if they think it's worthwhile to mess with it, just leave it, pay the fee.
So I, I would think it'd be better if you eliminate any changes to, uh, nine three C five E and we bring that back also as a separate, uh, discussion, because now you're gonna create a new fee that we don't have. So I think you'd wanna have that as a, as an agendized item before you do that.
So, so pull five and nine?
Yes.
And correct the, uh, can and will serve.
There we go, okay, can, is that a motion?
That, that's a motion.
I'll second that motion. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Deuce?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Skid?
Yeah.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
That's passed with a five oh, thank you very much. Uh, next on the agenda is committee reports.
Mayor, I got one, I got a request. Can we revisit six really fast?
I'm sorry?
Can we revisit, uh, uh, agenda item number six really fast?
Revisit item number six?
Yeah, I just got a quick comment or request in a sense.
Sure, let's go back to it, we can do that.
Is it possible to, uh, maybe get a realistic number or official bid and know really what it's gonna cost to do the full thing as far as all the work and then have you guys go back and, I mean, then we can revisit our budget or whatever, maybe there is something we can do and work with them, so you guys aren't going back so sternly, at least there's some flexibility there, not committing one-hundred percent, but not saying, uh, uh, no in a sense.
Did, you saw the letter...
I would like to leave the open-mindedness, I was just thinking about that.
I, I agree with you on that, but did you see the letter from the fire department?
Uh, no.
Read the letter from the fire department. They said they will not spend a dime on bringing that truck in. They cannot afford to. So that puts the, that puts the onus on the city and the tribe with, without support from the party.
Well, I guess that's my, my point, is getting the real cost on everything, all of these things that, you know, it's not just, I, we know it's not gonna be just thirty-five grand or sixty-five grand, what's the real number and maybe we can help out in some way, just as...
Well, you got, you gotta spend the thirty-four to get a set of plans for somebody to bid it, to get a real number.
I, I got that.
So, so we don't have anybody paying the thirty-four right now. So without the city putting up the thirty-four to design it and get it out to bid, we can't give you a concrete number on what the cost is. It's, it's just gonna be estimates until you have a full set of plans that a contractor can, can bid on to give you the actual number.
Okay.
So that might be our approach.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, I mean, that's, that was my thought.
Right, and they did, you know, they authorized the money to do the preliminary engineering, so if you get them to, to authorize the design, then we could start that process, for sure.
We'll take that as marching orders.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, onto, uh, committee reports, that's me. For SB CAG, which was a brief meeting. The consent calendar, uh, the, uh, interesting thing was the call box, uh, system upgrade is that SB CAG is gonna spend about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to upgrade the call boxes to a, uh, three G, uh, communication system because the old style has gone away and we have to upgrade it to, to make those call boxes, uh, still work. And they're gonna be, they're gonna be eliminating a bunch of call boxes so that, uh, in areas where there's high density and high people, a lot of people.
So do, do those things get used?
Oh, yes.
Oh.
They get, they, I for- I've forgotten in, a number, but there, there's, there, there, I wish I had that information with my fingertips, but they are used and they're used pretty heavily. The, in, in remote areas in particular, not everybody has cell phones, not all, not all cell phones will connect in remote areas, uh, and in, in high-density areas, for example, down, uh, uh, California seventeen, by the, on the way to university, those are all gonna be eliminated, for example. Uh, there are, there are call boxes in, in carpentery that will be eliminated. And there, there's a formula that they've set up to eliminate quite a few, and I'll get the, I'll get that information if you'd like. Uh, they changed the overall work program and added a few projects to the thing. The, and the, the transportation problem is that the, because gas taxes are off and because of high mileage vehicles that use fewer, fewer fuels, the money are, that the state is receiving for highway projects is decreasing by seven-hundred-and-fifty-four billion dollars. The, uh, or is that bil- no, it's million, million dollars, uh, and they, they are eliminating those projects to that amount across the state. Uh, they're asking for various COGS, which are, which we are, association governments, to, to volunteer to eliminate projects. Well, that doesn't happen, we're not gonna volunteer to eliminate any projects, we'll allow the, the California Transportation Commission to make those decisions for us.
So in other words, the highway improvement in the south of our county's probably not gonna happen.
No, those funds don't affect the one-oh-one widening project at all.
Really?
Yeah, they don't. There're, there're other projects, other safety improvement projects and those, those sorts of things that, that won't be eliminated and, and I would, there's a, a, a project in Golita, for example, it's on the, it could be on the chopping block. Uh, there's a, uh, they also consi- well, there were three projects that were, uh, that were being considered and I don't have those at the top of my head. The clean air, uh, pilot program for, uh, buses from Santa Barbara to, uh, to San Andres Valley and, and back, uh, I pulled that off the consent calendar and made a plea that the, the transportation, I mean, the tourist agencies in Santa Barbara City consider also contributing to this fund. The fund is being paid for by the North County, out of North County funds, uh, North County Measure A funds, uh, and we're asking that, that the South County join in with this proj- uh, pilot project and make it last, uh, through June. Uh, there, we're at, we allowed another fourteen thousand dollars to pay for that then. I was, I was made aware that the San, uh, Solvay, uh, Visiting Conference Bureau would be willing to add a couple more dollars if necessary to make sure this program gets an opportunity to be successful. And then we talked about our lobbyist from, from Sacramento came in and gave an overview on what kind of projects that he's going to go to, uh, the legislature about. And that basically is all of it, and you'll get a report, uh, when it comes to me, I'll have it forwarded to you for the, for SB CAG. And that's all I have, was there any other thing before we adjourn? Uh, we're adjourned.